All right, it is 6:31 and I'd like to call this meeting to order and establish that we do have a quorum. This meeting in the Seguin Independent School District has been duly called and notice of this meeting has been set in accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, Section 551.043 of the Texas Government Code. We have our flag this evening, Mr. Lewis?
I do.
Okay, so first we will say our pledges to the US and Texas flag. And Denise, can I get you to lead us in the pledges?
Sure.
All right. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you, Ms. Crittenden. I'll give everybody a bit of time for a moment of silence. All right. First up, we have our task force reopening. I know these folks have been working extremely hard, long hours. So we look forward to hearing what y'all have come up with. So I'll hand it over to, I guess, Dr. Gutierrez.
Yes, good evening, Board of Trustees, Seguin ISD staff and community. Greatly appreciate everyone taking the time to tune in to this very important meeting where we're going to be talking about our reopening of school plans. I want to just start by sharing just some stats. When we closed school back in March, right after spring break in Texas, there were less than 1,000 cases at that time. As we progressed through, we started knowing that the, seeing that the trends continued to move upward as far as the number of cases. And we determined that we needed a task force to really think about how the opening of school needed to look. At that time, when we first convened on May the 18th, there were about 48,000 COVID cases in Texas. Fast forward to today, there are over 275 cases and those numbers continue to rise. I believe I heard just a bit ago that there are 10,000 new cases just today across the state. When the task force first came together, representatives from campuses and various departments across the district really focused on six buckets of work. And throughout this process, from May 18th until today, a lot has changed. The task force started out by really thinking about multiple scenarios for learning. And then we decided on really focusing on two. And thankfully, we did because the state really eliminated several options and has told schools that we would need to reopen and allow parents the opportunity to choose to send their kids to school. Well, as you're going to hear me say over and over again, things continue to evolve and we have to modify. Well, it looks like Governor Abbott just issued some news for Texas schools that will again change the direction of our work with allowing school districts flexibility. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that flexibility as we progress through the presentation. But the seven buckets of work that the team focused on were on school operations, school personnel, operations for mills, operations for transportation, academics, whole child supports, and distant learning. The reopening of schools task force had initially started, like I said, planning for multiple scenarios. And then we decided to really focus on two, 100% remote learning at home and 100% learning at school. I want to say that I'm very proud of the work that this group has completed. In just a matter of weeks, with things continuing to change day by day, you'll have an opportunity to see the work that they produced. And the work isn't over because we've got to plan the learning piece that has to take place. So there are multiple layers that still need to happen. I also want to make it clear to the community that additional dollars were not, are not coming to Seguin ISD to support the additional expenses that are needed during this pandemic. I'm thankful to our Board of Trustees for their support during the planning process and for approving the allocation of over $600,000 to support remote learning and innovation in our buildings by affording us the opportunity to purchase additional devices and internet connectivity for our students. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mark Kandhu, who has served as the chair for the reopening of school task force.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to check that y'all can hear me, maybe a thumbs up or something, some head nods. So Dr. Gutierrez did a great job in really introducing the work that we've been doing. I'm going to ask Mr. Lewis to present to you all a PowerPoint that we're going to use to talk through the work. As Dr. Gutierrez said, we've been meeting at least weekly to talk through these things. And the PowerPoint will give you an idea of the work that is still happening. And of course, some of the things that we have in place, knowing that we've got to be extremely flexible.
Mr. Kandhu, I do want to share because there may be people in the audience thinking, well, why wasn't this presentation posted? And I want to say I'm very proud of our transparency and we share everything. However, it's important to know, as I said earlier, things continue to evolve and change. And so we didn't want to share something that would have to be updated. And so this is the first time that it is viewed for the public. And of course, it will continue to change as decisions at the state level change.
Thank you. So in the first couple of slides that I'm going to present to you all, what you will see is just an overview of the work. If you could jump to the next slide, please. There we go. So we set out with three big tasks, right? Or three major objectives that, again, this task force wanted to complete when we started this conversation in May. One of them was to formulate as a plan to bring students and staff back safely and in a responsive and a responsible manner. One, that addresses students, making sure that they continue to learn. That is our number one priority. But equally important is their safety. And then, of course, the safety of our staff because without our staff, we cannot educate our students. The next thing that we wanted to ensure that we had a plan for was for the gradual relaxation of social distancing. We all yearn for the day that we can come back to school. You know, school never really stopped, right? What stopped was people being present in buildings. But all along, our teachers and our administrators have been working with students, including summer school at the high school and the middle school. We couldn't have elementary face-to-face summer school, but there are activities for some of them as well. And so we want to get to a place where we can relax those social distancing practices and procedures. But at this point, we're not there yet and you'll see what we have in place. And then the last thing that we really wanted to address was we have to be ready for any closure, whether it's a day or two, or it's another two weeks, or, you know, another shutdown that may come towards us. And so that is what you'll see, and that was the objectives of the task force. On the next slide, you'll have an overview of our task force members. So our team leaders are our superintendent leadership team, right? Which includes myself, Mr. Lewis, Ms. LaGore, Mr. Hilberg. It includes Sean as our public information officer. And of course, HR and so forth and so on. We included our directors who are really thinking about either whole child support or the academics pieces. Other members of our team included some principals. We needed to make sure that we had representatives from our administrative team. So we included Ms. Hernandez for the elementary, Dr. James Diaz for middle school, and our associate principal in this block at the high school. And then, of course, we had some support members. We invited people throughout the month as we needed support to discuss different, different parts of the plan, whether it was child nutrition or lead nurse, our district technology folks and so forth and so on. Part of what is next is after we present to you all and we get some, is our teachers. We have, depending on the size of the campus, teacher reps, either one, two, or four at the high school, since it's our biggest campus. And we will meet with them in the next coming weeks to begin to lay out what this is going to look like as we move from the planning phase to the actual face-to-face or online learning. On the next slide, you'll have an opportunity to see, again, the subcommittees, right? Those big buckets that Dr. Gutierrez was talking about that we focused on. So the public health, most important, our school personnel, and we'll address what that's going to look like as we come back. Our school meals, our transportation, academics, whole child supports, and of course, the distance learning component. And then on the next slide, there, again, Dr. Gutierrez really talked about how we narrowed our focus of our work and we chose two models. So what you're going to see and hear is either a face-to-face where students are in school or a remote learning environment where students are still working and learning, but they're at home. Then one of the things that we want to discuss, a couple of days ago, I believe, Mr. Hoffman put out a survey to district staff, really thinking about, or asking about their thoughts on a possible September start date. Early in the, in the planning, we had discussed possibly starting early. We had, we reviewed the surveys and there were some responses that the community felt that it was too early to start. So we kept our original calendar that you all adopted. Now what we're thinking about is a possible September start date. And we'll discuss that in detail a little later on. But it'll allow us some flexibility that we need to be able to get some of the things that you're going to see in the plan done. Then in the next slide, we're going to go into now each of those buckets, right? The, so the first one is school operations and public health concerns. And that's going to be Ms. LaGore, who's going to go through this slide.
All right, good evening. Can you hear me, Mark? All right. So we start with public health concerns. And there are considerable public health concerns with COVID-19. And that includes how the district can best protect the health of people. For us, that includes students, staff, and anyone that will be in our facilities or on buses. We follow the prevention guidelines from the CDC as well as what we're given from TEA. And we've also started conversations and had conversations with the hospital and other local medical as well as emergency management, as well as the health department, which I'll talk about a little bit into one of these slides. But from those guidelines, we take this information to determine what a school should be doing because the goal is to reduce the likelihood of an outbreak on school campuses, knowing that there is nothing that can prevent at 100%. So the bullet points include the requirement really to pre-screen symptoms of students and staff. So there are certain symptoms that will be communicated that everybody should be looking for on a daily basis. And if those symptoms are exhibited, those students and staff should not come to school. Also, daily temperature checks. The subcommittee talking about public health is looking at temperature checks being done at home with families, but also with no contact thermometers. And then the possibility of scans at entrances of schools. It's also important to teach and post the hygiene protocols at the campuses. And the CDC has a lot of, if you go on their website, they have a lot of examples related to germs and hand washing. Because as we've been reading, as well as getting local opinions, we know that really it comes down to hand washing and hygiene protocols and making sure that those are built in to the schedule. And having hand sanitizer at all of the entrance and exits to all of our facilities and on our buses, as well as in the classrooms and office areas. And then having on the playgrounds stations for hand sanitizer so multiple children can hand sanitize quickly. Also, hand washing regularly. So the schedule would definitely need to include regular hand washing. So a lot more time during the course of the day dedicated to hand sanitizing and hand washing so that it actually is getting done. Then we move into mask wearing. And we, of course, would be following any local orders, which we currently have in place. But what we've discovered as a result of doing research is that it's ideal to have masks on to prevent spread and transmission of COVID-19. So the committees talked about wearing masks, all people, whether students or staff, when inside the building. And it's not possible to social distance. And of course, that's as developmentally appropriate because that's built into the CDC guidelines. And of course, accommodations would be on a case-by-case basis. Oh, not quite yet. Also, having face shields available. Those are coming from the state. And we're considering dividers where masks or social distancing is not possible. And plexiglass being added to office areas and areas in the classroom, such as teacher centers where students would need to be within that six feet of each other. Avoiding sharing supplies. So this goes into school supplies for the year and the need for those not to be community school supplies, but everybody to have their own. The goal of reducing people in hallways is important and in the common room. So that means staggered release times as well as changing up what passing periods look like so that only certain groups would be in the halls at a certain time. Anyone has seen the high school, any high school during passing periods, you know that there's a lot of kids in the halls, so that would be changed. Regular cleaning and disinfecting during the day, that would be in the classrooms with the teachers and the students, and then after school with the custodians. But a real need to disinfect daily. There will be an area for students who are feeling symptoms with the nurse to be isolated away and for parents or caregivers to come and pick them up quickly. And then for visitors, this would, we want our schools to be open to the public. However, during a time like this, it necessitates limiting visitors on campuses. Click.
Click.
Okay. This gives you an outline of some of the PPE, which is the personal protection equipment. We are being provided, and actually we've got delivery this Thursday, of seven pallets of equipment that is coming to us from the state. And that includes masks for adults and children that are both disposable and cloth. And you can see the numbers that the state is providing. For the adults, the disposable is a little over 45,000. But those are one-time use. And the adult cloth, which would be reusable and washable, is almost 12,000. And for children, the disposable masks at 19,500. And then the cloth masks at about 4,500. And then face shields are going to be provided. There are 914 of those coming from the state. Gloves, a little over 31,000. And at this point, we're assuming that that's per glove, so that would divide that for people's use. Then the state's also providing 766 gallons of liquid hand sanitizer. And we'll be having bottles provided to the campuses so that those can be in all of the classrooms. And then they're providing 54 non-contact thermometers that look a lot like, you know, these where you just aim it at the person's head and it quickly takes the temperature. We already had purchased some things, knowing that we had some activities happening in the summer, including athletics and testing and assessments, and we were looking at summer school. So we were able to use some of, we had 45 gallons of the liquid hand sanitizer, which went very, very quickly. But we did find that that worked very well. And you can see our maintenance department has already purchased 310 wall hand sanitizers. Those will be put at the front of all campuses as well as in the hallways. And there's a lot of to be determined because a lot is going to be determined based on how many students are actually on campuses or not. And therefore, what our need is going to be throughout the course of the year. The hand sanitizer stations are, like I said, those units that'll be out on the playgrounds of the elementary schools with multiple hand washing units attached. Click. Another part of public health is the contract tracing. And that is when we know that's what we do about that. And we have had practice doing that over the course of the summer. And what that includes is positive cases are reported to HR. There's a process for that. And then there's the quarantine requirement. So we take the protocols set forth with the CDC and Health Department. We investigate those direct contacts. So we have people related to safety who contact the staff or student directly to find out what they have, who they've had contact with in the last 14 days and getting facts. And then we inform Region 8 Health Department. We don't have a local health department here in Seguin, so we have to utilize our regional one, which we know based on the numbers skyrocketing locally and in the area that they have a lot that they are working on. But we inform them and we then close off the area where the staff or student was until it can be disinfected because you have to wait a period of time before the area can be disinfected. And then per recent TEA guidance, we're to notify all teachers, staff, and families of all students if a positive case is identified among students, teachers, or staff. Of course, we do have to consider confidentiality, so we can't report the person's actual name. But we will be and have been informing people who've had direct contact, of course, of more specifics, but then this would expand to notify the facility of the campus where that would take place. And then based on what the Health Department tells us, as well as our findings based on the facts, there would be a possible and probable quarantine of a class, an area, or an entire campus. So we need to be very ready for what we call rolling closures. And I think the word of the year is flexibility as we look at what this would look like for a campus and for the entire district. Now, other parts of public health is spacing desks, ideally six feet apart if possible. That may not be possible in certain areas. Increasing airflow from the outdoors. Of course, that would be recommended when it's not 110 degrees outside like it is right now. But gathering students outdoors as possible is actually ideal because what the science is telling us is that it's being indoors where the risk is higher and being outdoors, the risk is lower. Eliminating assemblies, depending on local conditions. And right now with the local conditions, the assemblies would be eliminated. And then we get to possibly the most important bullet point related to public health. And that are, that is the mental health considerations of everybody, of students, of parents, of staff, of community members. There's a lot of anxiety that is connected to COVID-19 and where we are right now. And we have to take that into consideration and also know that we all are also exhibiting those issues. So what do we have in place? We've got, and we will continue to work with communities and schools. We have an emphasis on social emotional learning this upcoming year with the Climate Transformation Grant. And we'll also rely on our community partners that deal with mental health. So the emphasis has to be on the mental health components and getting us all through this period of time until we get to a point where there's a vaccine.
Mrs. LaGore, as you're, we're transitioning to personnel and you've covered some of the public health information. I believe it's also important for the community to know that we've had about 26 positive employee cases this summer. And we've had one death of an employee, unfortunately. And school has not even started. And we have minimal contact with others. We're very careful. We take all precautions. But I think it's important for the community to be aware of that, that information. And what that has afforded us is the opportunity to really work through the contract tracing and the protocols to go through in preparation for hundreds of employees returning to work in August. And with that, we will hand it over to Cindy Moreno, our Chief Human Resource Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Gutierrez. I completely agree with your statement. It's been a difficult summer working through just the protocols that we need to have in place and at the same time, provide as much peace and calm as much as possible as we're working through these issues. So I do appreciate everybody's support through this. In personnel, our number one consideration when we're dealing with the pandemic is to identify personnel with pre-existing conditions and also our more mature staff members. We're going to identify these, these people along with the pre-existing conditions at our campuses with the help of our administrators so that we can put priority for those personnel to be doing the remote teaching assignments. Some other considerations are, of course, which teachers are going to be the virtual teachers, which ones are going to be the in-person teachers. And a lot of this is going to go back again to how many students actually come into the classroom. And again, we'll keep those vulnerable populations at the top of the list to be virtual instructors. Our support positions are instructional assistants. We're still going to need our instructional assistants. So it might be in-person in a classroom, or it might be virtually. They're jumping on and helping with small group instruction as best as we can in a virtual environment. Some of the staffing considerations that have come up are from our teachers that have gone through alternative certification routes that are in tech prep program, teacher prep programs. TEA has extended waivers for these teachers so that they, if they have completed their content area work, they're getting an extension of the year to complete their certification with the mandatory shutdowns that happened in the spring that really put everybody behind and in a panic. So we're very appreciative of the state working with us to get our new teachers certified. Click.
Okay, so next is school operations and school meals. So good evening, Board of Trustees and community. I'm Jacob Galban. I'm the Child Nutrition Director for Seguin ISD. So I wanted to present to you our serving strategies as looking at this coming school year. And then I have a couple of slides that will present the capacity for social distance eating. So to start off, I'll go over the serving strategies that we're looking So to start off, I'll go over the serving strategies that we're looking at. I have it broken out into two separate categories. We have our on-campus meals for onsite learners. That's traditional based learning and also off-campus meals for remote learners. So to look at on-campus meals, we have elementary schools. We've already been doing breakfast in the classroom and as Kirsten already said, that space is going to be broken out six feet apart as much as possible. So we feel that that might, that would be the, one of the safest ways to service meals during breakfast and possibly during lunch as well, too. We feel that doing it that way, those students are going to eat on their desk and those areas are already going to be clean and sanitized when those students come in. And not sharing a space with somebody else is going to help ensure that those meals are sanitary. So that's the strategy we're looking at for breakfast and possibly lunch for elementary schools. And as secondary schools, we're also going to consider breakfast in the classroom at both the middle schools, uh, more than likely doing classroom meals at the high school is going to be very difficult considering it is a three-story building and very big. But we have a reason to believe that we can still service meals in a safe way, and I'll kind of go into that a little bit more on the next slide. So as far as feeding meals in the cafeteria, we're going to look at some, the same safety needs that Kirsten already alluded to in her slide, and, uh, that's going to go in, in hand in hand with having sanitizers at the serving line entrances. We're also going to look into getting floor decals in the serving line and in the cafeteria spaces to designate the six feet apart that students need to maintain if possible. Uh, student IDs with barcodes because traditionally students would go into the serving line and at the end they would input their student ID into a keypad. But what we're trying to do is make sure that as much as possible that students are not ever handling the same items immediately after somebody else. So to go along with that idea, we'll be packaging meals in pre-packed, clear-to-go containers. And there will be still options and choices for students to make. But we're going to serve meals in a way that's going to make sure that you can't touch somebody else's food at any point in time. So after lunch service occurs, though, if it is in a cafeteria setting, it's very important for there to be time between lunch periods to sanitize tables, chairs, anything that students or other individuals might touch, uh, during a lunch period and as well sweeping the floor. So we're working closely with our campus administrations to make sure that there's going to be time to permit for those needs. For meals in the classroom, we're going to have students, if, make choices prior to lunch if that is the, uh, modality that's going to be used at a campus. So the main need for that would just be a, a teacher lunch count, which elementary schools already do this, most of them do at least. And so those are, those are some strategies that are already in place that we feel we can implement uh, at other campuses that aren't already doing that. So to move to off-campus meals, we are looking at some different possibilities. One that sticks out is the very first one is our curbside meal service at each campus, uh, or some bus stops. And that's what we're already doing. That's what our staff has been doing since the closure first began in March. We've been serving meals curbside or at a bus stop at fifteen different sites for the past hundred and fifteen days. So we know that's a method that works and our staff has grinded out the process and they're very good and they exceed at it. And, and I'm very grateful for such a cooperative staff and, and all the hard work they've put in to make sure that the meals have, have continued to be served during this time. So other strategies that might come into play would be to send a breakfast and lunch home with push drivers during the morning routes and possibly a student that normally would ride the bus to that site and pick up the meal. And if there is a instance of students that are alternating onsite and remote learning days, maybe send the meals home with students for the following day, which is similar to what we're doing now as well because we provide meals on Thursday for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Can go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, uh, we, we did some research and we went onsite and worked with the campus administrations to determine what a socially-distanced cafeteria would look like. And as you might not be surprised to find out, a normal situation, if there was normal enrollment at these campuses, the cafeteria might not, isn't usually big enough to fit all the students that need to be held. So we had to get a little creative and I'll, and I'll explain that. So looking at the first section at Seguin High School, a normal enrollment is anywhere between eighteen hundred students to two thousand. So if we look at if there's going to be onsite and remote learning students, we estimated possibly fifty percent enrollment might be on campus at a given time. So traditionally, there are three lunch periods, so the need would be for each lunch period to serve three hundred to three hundred and thirty-three students at the high school in this situation. So you can see that we found that the cafeteria can seat about a hundred and sixty-eight students in a socially-distanced format. So we branched out and we worked with the principal to determine some other areas. And we found the library could sit approximately sixty students, dispersed students, which are students that typically eat on other sites, uh, parts of the campus. So that might be the band students, choir, cosmetology, other extracurriculars that might disperse among, uh, the campus anyway. He said that we could expect maybe sixty students per lunch period for that situation. And then outside, which on a, a nice day, which maybe not a hundred and five-degree day, uh, but there is seating outside that is shaded and a lot of students at Seguin High School enjoy eating outdoors anyway. We could expect quite a few spaces for, uh, outdoor seating and possibly purchasing outdoor chairs as well. So looking at those numbers, we found that a four hundred and eight students could be held per lunch period times three lunch periods. We're looking at about a hundred and twenty, uh, one thousand two hundred and twenty-four total seats for lunch are available. So we're, we're at a point to where we feel confident that we could service this number of students. And if there is need for more, there is overflow in the LGI, which is large group instructional rooms on the campus and as well on the third floors. So we feel confident that at this point that we could service these students in a safe way. And I won't go into as much detail on the next ones, but we did the same thing at AJB. And we found, you know, each campus has its unique challenges, so their cafeteria is significantly smaller. Uh, they're, they're looking to need to feed about a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and twenty-five students per lunch period. So the cafeteria there only fits sixty-six students. So we found some space in the halls near the cafeteria as well as the library and foyer. And we brought up our total to a hundred and twenty per lunch period. And that was enough to fit the need of feeding about three hundred and sixty for the day, if that was going to be the enrollment. So again, we feel confident that we can feed those students safely. Um, there is more overflow space available. There are seven classrooms that the principal would allocate to us if we needed. Uh, however, uh, as noted on the asterisk below, that space wouldn't likely not be available once February, March came through, just due to construction reasons, due to the plan, uh, bond construction for AJB. We can go to the next slide and again, I, we have, we did this at Jim Barnes and at Sagert as well, and I won't go into as much detail. But just to show that, again, these campuses all have specific needs and Jim Barnes, they really don't have, uh, as much open space as some of the other campuses. So their cafeteria only had a capacity for about eighty students. So that might be a site that where we have to do a hybrid model of feeding students in the cafeteria and in the classroom and possibly alternating those groups to allow students to have the same accessibility to choices. And at Sagert, we, we found that they more than likely have enough space for everybody because it's a smaller campus. There's about a hundred and five to a hundred and ninety at a normal enrollment setting. And that varies just of course with the number of MBLC students and the number of Burgess students at the campus. Um, so we found that the cafeteria and some of the outdoor area as well as one of the classrooms would give us enough capacity to say, safely serve these students. So we worked with administration to come up with these counts and just wanted to give everybody an example of what we're looking at. And just to make sure that we have, uh, the ability to serve these meals in a safe and sanitary way for all the students.
All right, I think I'm going to need it. There you go. Uh, so in the academics, we focused on three major areas. We used, um, the questions that Solution Tree asks our teachers to think about as they plan for lessons. And they engage in their professional learning, uh, professional learning communities. The first one is, what do we want students to learn? Uh, and so we know that we have to revamp our pacing guides, right? So every single classroom, um, especially in the, in the core areas, we've got what we call a year-at-a-glance, right? And that year-at-a-glance tells us what the teacher's supposed to be teaching, which unit they're supposed to be on and so forth and so on. Because we had the COVID nineteen shutdown in the spring, we had to ensure that anything that was not taught, that we allotted for some time, um, to teach that. So we revised our pacing guides for remote learning to happen in the spring, and we're ready and planning right now over the summer to do that in the fall. Uh, we also had to ensure that our face-to-face pacing guides, um, were ready, knowing that they could also change. So while those are ready and they're set and they're ready to be distributed with teachers, some teachers worked over the summer. Uh, we pulled some middle school staff. We pulled some high school math staff and we pulled elementary, especially to look at math, um, already. Uh, some of that summer planning is about to happen starting next week as we begin to develop some online, um, courses or online curriculum. So what we want students to learn is definitely either already created or in the works of being created. The next question that we wanted to answer is how will we know if the students already learned it? So one of the best ways to know is through assessment, right? So we have teacher and district created assessments. Again, in this summer planning, we were able to create some unit assessments and some common formative assessments for our middle schools. For high school math and elementary math, we are now extending that opportunity starting next week, as I mentioned, uh, just a while ago, for the other areas, including the elective areas and fine arts. Uh, we also have screeners. So we have ICE Station that we use in pre-K through eighth grade to help identify, uh, some screeners at the elementary and the middle school. Students would be able to get on either on the campus or remotely from home, um, to use ICE Station to take what we call ISIP, and that's a monthly screener. So that'll help us give us assessment data and reading. And then we have, uh, a very similar system called Imagine Math that we would use at the elementaries for math. And then, of course, um, through our online platform. So we know that if we're in face-to-face, we're going to launch, uh, what is called Seesaw. It is an online platform that is very user-friendly for both students and, uh, their parents as well as staff in pre-K through fifth grade. And then we're going to launch Google Classroom sixth through twelfth grade. In the spring, when we closed down, we tried to use Google Classroom for consistency. Um, and we know that it, while it's really beneficial and fairly easy to use, Seesaw is a, is a little, uh, more user-friendly for the elementary, so we're going to go ahead and do that with Seesaw. So our students who are learning face-to-face will also be engaging, um, with the technology just because we know that they have to be ready to go to, uh, remote learning just in case there's a spike or whatnot. Our remote learning will use Seesaw. One of the products that we also explored of a potential, um, purchase is a C, is a Pearson online school. After the last couple of weeks that we've been meeting, we just met yesterday again, uh, we decided that it's probably in the best interest of our students and our staff to write some of the curriculum ourselves. So, um, we will not be using the, the Pearson platform as we first envisioned. Instead, we will invest, uh, in our teachers and our teachers will write the curriculum over the next five weeks. And we'll launch that really soon, beginning next week. So that covers, um, how our students will learn it, either face-to-face, um, or remotely, using mainly those platforms. And then the third item that we wanted to answer is what will we do if the students don't learn it, right? So what's our intervention? So if you were in face-to-face for the students who are attending, uh, class every day, we already have interventions built into the schedule. We're going to work really closely with our principals to ensure that every campus, uh, regardless of its, um, secondary or elementary, has interventions built in, um, at the high school, whether it's flex time at our middle schools or elementary. We will focus on targeted, uh, student expectations that we know that there are gaps for each student. So the more targeted we are, the better, so that we can use that time to close any gaps that our students have. If we're, um, working with students from one of the remote platforms, we will also build in some time for some small group intervention. So students who will be working remotely will be working either, uh, synchronously. Uh, so that means that the teacher is live, just the way we are now teaching a lesson, or asynchronously, which means that the students are working at a self-paced. So we will pool time for small group intervention, um, if, or when we're doing some of that synchronous learning. So we want to make sure that even if students have gaps, that we have a time, whether it's face-to-face or through the computer, that we can close some of those gaps. So, um, the work that's to come, like I said, is just the planning. We've got, um, the next five weeks, we're really going to build into the planning. That includes, again, the content area and the electives to ensure that every single class that we offer, we can do it either face-to-face or through an online platform.
For transportation, we've cleaned and disinfected frequently touched surfaces on the school buses. At least between uses as much as possible. Drivers follow the same practices that the CDC recommends for bus transit and drivers wearing cloth masks and practicing frequent hand washing. We reduced the number of bus riders by encouraging our parents to drive their students, um, carpool, bike or walk. And the students with transportation IP will continue, uh, to, to run the bus.
So the, the distance learning part is very tied in very closely, of course, to the academics. So all teachers are going to have to at least run a blended classroom model, uh, and keep the things going because if the classroom has to, be sent home for any reason, then we know that, uh, learning's going to continue. With that class, even if it's for a short period of time, could be for a day, two days, a week, et cetera, whatever that ends up looking like. We have our new one-to-one program, um, being rolled out with a high school with Chromebooks. We're putting the one-to-one devices in all the elementary classrooms. And so that kind of leaves our middle school, uh, and pre-K, which doesn't have that one-to-one piece, but we're, um, gathering devices and accumulating some additional ones to have those to be checked out, uh, if needed again, uh, at our middle schools. Whereas the high school already have them in elementary, uh, we'll have them in the classroom that they could check out directly to the students, uh, from their classrooms. We don't have to have big lines and people lining up from the high, and from the middle school, we're working out uh, with a supply of items. Also, we are, uh, also tonight at the board meeting talking about, uh, a program that's provided in policy, legal policy that allows us to, um, send devices home with students that the district, uh, has deemed basically end of life. Um, they still have a little life in them, but for our purposes, um, so far out, they've, they've can't do everything that we need them to do. Um, so we're going to send them home with kids. Um, and we could do up to And we could do up to 250 to 300 devices home with kids. So we could put a device in homes permanently that could help us and help families get through the next, this next school year. Of course, the students will need it if they're 100% online, they will need some sort of assistance. And so we've been accumulating Wi-Fi devices, Wi-Fi hotspots, still, still accumulating that. State actually had some good news with that today. They're going to maybe help with some procurement of devices if need be. Help with that, with that part, they're not providing and we're paying for them, but help us kind of lock down some more if needed. Well, of course, we'll continue to offer Wi-Fi available in parking areas around, around our buildings, especially out here. We have one, an antenna set up on, on Mercer, the old Mercer Bloomberg, the Learning Center here at Oak Park. That kind of, that kind of lights up that parking lot with pretty good Wi-Fi access. We have, we're putting a PD schedule in place for teachers on blended learning and online learning. Talked about our Chromebook rollout, out of circulation. And we have a September, really an October 1st deadline for elementary in-classroom one-to-one setup. But we're really working hard to make that on day one of school, whenever, whenever that is. So we're all ready to go at that point. We've talked about classroom sanitation of technology materials, the students use them in the class. We've been working hard to try to find the alcohol wipes and the things that we could wipe, safely wipe. Technology down with, we're not into spraying stuff on our keyboards and stuff. We do a lot of wipe downs with, with a high-concentrate alcohol wipes. We're securing those again, we have a checkout for elementary students. And we'll have one for middle school students. Talking about digital literacy through a certain class, just to reinforce how to be a good digital citizen. The things about protecting your passwords and how to be good online workers, how to interact with your, with your class in an online setting and try to teach kids some of these lessons. They get these already, but we're going to make sure we roll these out at the beginning of the school year. We're putting together expectations for online learning for, for students, of course, for teachers and for parents, and providing resources to help parents learn about Seesaw and Google Classroom and those kind of things on their, their kids are doing. And again, also spinning up our SAGINE Succeeds at Home website with those materials, with information and, and help for those families and for students in the 100% online part of our, of our program. I think this is handing off to Pete. Think you need to unmute Pete.
Sorry about that. The mute button is playing games with me. Thanks, Bill. Good evening, board members. It's good to see all of you. I get the honor and pleasure to talk about the whole child supports that we have in place in SAGINE ISD. And I've framed these around the five tenants of the whole school, whole community, whole child model. And we, we often refer to this as the WISK model. And those five tenants are listed there, healthy, safe, challenged, supported, and engaged. We, we do a lot and try to address the whole child. And you've heard many examples of that throughout the presentation tonight. But I want to highlight a few others and, and know also that, that we are constantly evaluating our procedures to make sure that we are supporting the optimal learning environment that, that our kiddos need to be ready to take on the challenges of the day. But we're going to start with healthy. And the, the reasons why we brought link policies into SAGINE ISD are relevant today possibly more than ever. You know, link by design boosts immune response, helps kiddos. And I'm going to add adults to maintain self-regulation and, and it creates the optimal learning environment. So that when kids are in the classroom, they're in a state of, of high absorption of content. And so we need that more than ever. And so we're going to be sure to maintain that. We're also going to be sure to maintain physical education opportunities, both remotely and in face-to-face models. When we talk about safety, I want to focus on the role of our school nurses. We have some outstanding school nurses in SAGINE ISD. One of them, one example is Veronica at the high school. Veronica has been providing the task force with, with up-to-date public health information. And through these conversations, it's become clear that we need to provide a state-of-the-campus public health message on a weekly basis. And so Veronica will help to coordinate this with the other nurses. This might come out in a video format, this might come out in a campus announcement. But that way, we have factual-based information getting out to the kiddos and to the staff so that they know how to keep themselves safe. Our school nurses are often turned to for health advice from you name it, whether it's a kiddo that comes to school on Monday morning and says, "Mom asked me to show you this." Or a staff member that says, "I feel this way after lunch," you know? And so we really want to empower the, the campus nurse and, and learn from their expertise. We want to maintain challenge. We have recently trained all of our pre-K through five staff on Positive Action. Positive Action is a social emotional learning curriculum that provides an opportunity for students to really evaluate their feelings and their thoughts. This can be done remotely, this can be done in a face-to-face model. And we're going to make sure that that happens so that we are, Kirsten alluded to some of this earlier. We, we need to make sure that we're processing what we're feeling and how our actions are affecting one another. Again, now maybe more important than ever. We also have new opportunities through the School Transformation Grant and through Positive Action and through LINK to have some baseline screeners that, that can be used to, to kind of gauge where we're at in terms of our, our student need for support. And we can also touch base with those throughout the year to make sure that our interventions are working. And so we're going to use those screeners, those surveys throughout the year to make sure we have what we need to take care of our kiddos. Supported, we're going to continue and enhance wellness opportunities for students and staff. Last year, under the direction of Danica Murillo, we brought in Breathe for Change. And we've had mindfulness be integrated into many aspects of the school system. Again, that's going to be really important to us going forward for staff and students. We're looking forward to providing increased opportunities to be able to focus on those health, whether that be physical health or mental health, strategies to, to make sure that all of us are on our A-game because we need to be there. Youth Mental Health First Aid Training and Restorative Practice Training for Staff is also underway under the direction of Kirsten Legor and, and her School Transformation Grant team. And so we're thrilled about that because, again, all of those opportunities for us to, to improve our craft will make us better able to support our kids and, and the needs are increasing. The Hazel Health Platform is something that we're going to talk to you more about in the coming weeks. But Hazel Health is an opportunity for us to bring telemedicine into our school nurse office. So through the Hazel Health Platform, we will be able to have school nurses remotely connect with a licensed physician in Texas that can help to provide medical support to our students that might not be able to see a doctor otherwise. And so we're really excited about this opportunity, look forward to talking to you more about it. We're going to be training our, our campus administrators and our nursing staff in the coming weeks on how that will work. And look forward to, to talking more to you about that. Engaged, there, there is an opportunity now to, to really harness the past six months as a way to make connections with our students as we come back into an instructional setting. And we're going to encourage our staff to really take advantage of this, to really figure out what, what has been going on with the kids and use that as an avenue to, to create relationships, really talk about the unique things that they've experienced. Many of our kids have, have had opportunities to grow in a real positive way in addition to these, these negative challenges that have happened. Many of our kids have had to step up and provide different levels of support at home as family was out working. Many of our older students are providing instructional support to our younger students. These are skills that we need to, to honor and embrace and really discuss as we go through the start of the school year. We also want to continue to promote extracurricular activities and after-school clubs. Whether we're in a face-to-face model or a remote model, we need to provide these opportunities for engagement with our kiddos to make sure that we are bringing joy and passion into their life in addition to the academic support that we're going to provide. So that's all I have for you guys.
Mr. Silvius, I just want to commend you for your efforts and with the support of Kirsten Legor to bring in Hazel Health. It, it's something that I know you've talked about for, for several years and it has taken time to get to this point. But this is significant for, for our students to be able to provide this level of healthcare support at our schools is something that we should be very proud of.
Thank you very much. Thanks, sir.
That concludes the, the content. And I know it was a lot of information to take in. And to give you an idea, what started out as just a few pages of a skeleton document back in May turned into 50 pages of work along with links to, to resources to reference and, and research to support our decisions. And what the team is currently working on, and we weren't going to move forward until we had the opportunity to share the plans with the school board, is condensing all of that information into one comprehensive reopening of school plan that we can share with our community. What has also been very helpful is we had a lot of feedback that came that from, from community members and parents when they participated in the survey where we gauged the level of comfort in sending kids to school. And, and at that time, it was probably about 50%, but I believe things have changed. I've talked to some districts in the San Antonio area that are looking at 70 to 80% of their parents saying that they want to keep their kids in school. And so it, it's been a multitude of things that have led us to talk about the September start date. And I think you can see by, by hearing these individuals present that there is a lot of work that has to happen in a very fast way to ensure that our students are safe at school, but to also ensure that they're learning and to ensure the students at home are learning in a much more effective way than they were in the spring. We had to turn around a learning platform in just a few hours, it seemed like, in the spring. And we know that it wasn't as effective as we would have liked. So there, there's a lot of work that has to happen to make sure that we have a very robust, comprehensive learning platform for our students who are going to be learning from home. And that is going to take time, that is going to take teachers coming together to write the curriculum versus having an outside source do it for a lot of money that we do not have and is not being funded. And so we started talking about the pros and cons to a later start date because it seems like since we last sent that survey that the level of concern from our employees and from our parents has increased. And so we thought that we would send the survey to our employees first to gauge how they felt. And right now, we've had 700 participants and we have 1,000 employees in our district. And 80% believe that we should delay the start of school. And they also had an opportunity to provide feedback. And there are certainly a lot of alarm out there. And I think we all understand that we are in a dire situation in Texas. And we, we really need to think about, one, the safety and well-being of our students and their families, of our staff, many of which are over the age of 50. And think about the time and effort that needs to happen in order to be prepared for that first day of school when it comes to having a curriculum that is going to be robust and comprehensive, when it comes to ensuring that our buildings are safe. That is going to take time because we completely have to restructure the way our classrooms look, the way we operate in the cafeteria. And it looks great on paper, but we've got to put it into practice and be ready for that first day. Now, we all want our kids back in school. And I believe we all agree, we need our kids back. They don't learn at home like they do interacting with the teacher face-to-face and with peers. But we also have to think about our current reality in the state of Texas. And our community will also have an opportunity to provide us with feedback tomorrow. So I do encourage our community members, our parents, our staff to participate in the town halls tomorrow where you'll have an opportunity to learn about the reopening of school. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions through a Google form and also provide feedback on a delayed start. We, we're seeing districts make decisions already on delayed start. And so the hope would be that we could come back to the board at the next meeting and, and give them some feedback and, and make a recommendation to our Board of Trustees. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Board of Trustees to have the opportunity to ask questions.
Um, Bill, can you go back to the beginning of the slideshow where you had all of the different areas listed? Health, personnel, meals, and so on. I thought maybe if we went down that list with our questions, it'd be helpful. That's the one. Thank you. All right, I just had a couple of questions for Kirsten on the public health concerns. You had mentioned that there would be face shields. It was just a few, as I recall. How would we delegate who gets those face shields?
There are 914 coming from the state. And so we've been discussing how staff members would, would first, you know, not be forced to utilize those. But I think for safety, a lot of people would, would like those in combination even with a mask. And that would help ensure some safety. But we also know that there may be some students who, for whatever reason, may not be able to effectively wear a mask. So we, we do anticipate that there would be more of those potentially purchased. But those things are still in discussion. There are also masks. One of the issues with very young kids is the ability to see somebody's mouth and being able to see expressions. And we know that that's really important. And since we know that we're also looking at this for an extended period of time, a possibility of maybe face masks that have the little cutout so you can see masks. It may be, that may work a lot better for the younger ones. So that's been recent discussion. Of course, those are not the free ones that are coming from the state.
Okay. And then with thermometers, I think I saw the number 54?
Yes. So we had bought 20 just for the use of this summer. And then 54, which is the number that's coming to the school, that obviously would not put one in every classroom. We also know that the idea of, of taking one of these and scanning everybody that walks into a school is not very time-effective and really quite impossible. So if we intend to actually do a temperature check within the school and not place that obligation on the parent at the school. obligation on the parent who brings them to the school, uh we would need, we're looking at other options.
Okay.
Scanning, a wide-view scanning that can look at about thirty kids a second, which would be a lot more effective for time, but costly.
Yes, indeed. Uh trustees, any other questions for Kirsten?
Yes.
Yes.
This is, this is Carl. I got a question for Kirsten on uh Pete, what are we going to do for kids that are deemed they have a temperature and need to be uh quarantined, so to speak, in the school so their family can pick them up or? I'm in support of of getting everybody their temperature before they get into the door. Uh I know that's hard, but you know, a lot of places are doing it right now. If you've, you know, if you fend it off before it gets inside, at least you have that away from other kids and so forth. I know everybody's got a mask and all, but go ahead.
So sure, there's a couple of questions built into that. So related to temperatures, when we look at the the data, um there is some data out there that not um this the students, the children that are testing positive may or may not um have a fever as much as adults would, but there are still some that do. But we're also be scanning adults as well, and that includes, you know, the teachers and any visitors that would be um coming in. Uh plus, when it comes to future um flu issues and stomach bugs and other things that are just part of our normal year, that would be a convenient thing to have. Uh but students who do register higher than a hundred um degrees, uh and that seems to be the the temperature that everybody's looking for. If that is some, if somebody does uh have that temperature, they would be taken over to um the nurse's office and double-scan just to make sure that it was in fact accurate. And then they would need to be in an isolated area of the nurse's office because they would need to be continued to be monitored as a parent is called and uh they're picked up and brought home. Uh so we would need to keep them away from other students. And then, of course, disinfecting that area and the entire nurse area. Um and for students who are coming to the nurse's area for other reasons, because of course, that is uh in the normal course of business, that they would, if they could be dealt with right at the door so that they're not actually entering, that would be ideal. And then, of course, supplying our nurses with the PPE that they need, um which would be far above what they would typically wear. But we would need to outfit them much like people who are in hospitals, you know, what our healthcare workers use so that they're safe as well, since they will have direct contact with students who have the fevers.
Right. Okay.
Or staff.
I have a question to Lynda Duncan here. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, um and looking at the class sizes, um will they be the same as they are now?
That's a really good question, Lynda. When um we were first looking at this, it looked like the uh six-feet rule that the CDC was recommending. That was going to be very difficult to put, well, actually impossible, to put one hundred percent of the student population into classrooms. Although that is a recommendation from CDC, the recommendations and guidelines coming from TEA use words such as "if possible." Um and obviously, that's not possible. So it would be um potentially less than the six feet uh between students. It would be as many feet in between as possible. And that is taking into consideration like different schedules and uh using your gyms or your bigger areas uh for students. So it it wouldn't look like, you know, a a traditional school in all ways. There may be flexibility and creative solutions to reduce sizes of classes so that
To encourage uh outs- outdoor instruction, of course, when the weather permits, because it's a hundred and twenty degrees outside. Uh but but as far as Lynda and I'm, I'm going to ask you a a question for clarification. Are you referring to what what Kirsten is outlining? Are you referring to numbers of students in a classroom?
Number of students in a classroom, both works as well, too.
So it, what we can't do is say every teacher is going to have ten kids because then we'd have to hire more staff. So if we were to have eighty percent of our students come on the first day because their parents have that right to choose, then we'll have classrooms with fifteen, eighteen kids where we have to restructure how kids are learning um in the classroom to ensure that there is distance, utilizing spaces as as Mrs. Legor pointed out as well. But it could be a situation where uh there could be a large number of students learning at home and 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 fewer at school, where a teacher could be responsible. Let's say it is a a second-grade classroom and that classroom ratio is twenty-two to one. It could be a situation just because of scheduling um that that teacher has twenty-four kids on his or her virtual roster. Uh it it all, i- it's it's just going to be contingent upon the the kids that show up and the number of kids that choose to learn at school, which is something we can't predict right now. But once the registration process starts where we begin to see uh what parents are opting for, then we'll be able to plan accordingly.
So we're still looking at each elementary campus stands alone. When they they register, they'll have a teacher?
Yes, absolutely. So every student will have a teacher for their grade level or for that uh that particular course. Um and and because of the two options that we're looking at, we will continue with every campus working independently versus a hybrid model, which could mean, could have meant that virtual students would be assigned to one particular campus. So that's not something that we're looking at.
And then you said earlier, you were looking at maybe starting a little bit later than what we originally planned.
So because of current trends, um and and as I said today, Texas had reported, I think, a record over ten thousand cases. We are looking, and because of the concern that's coming from parents and employees, and now we have the data that shows that employees are concerned, uh we are looking at a start date that would be after Labor Day, and I believe that date is September the eighth.
So at that point, if we decided to go that route, we just have to look at developing an entirely new calendar.
The calendar would remain uh very close to what was adopted. The the significant change is going to be delaying the start date and adding days at the end. Um and 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 playing around with some of the minutes, really try to reduce the amount of time that we have people in school in June. Of course, we will, we would get out in June, but we we don't want it to be towards the end of June. Um so if if we can look at our minutes and see what time we can buy and look at some of the days that that we have outlined for whether it's staff development, teacher workday, or a holiday, and possibly making that an instructional day um to give us as close as possible to the current calendar that's been adopted.
Would I worry about Labor Day, too, of people getting together and then have another spike in cases right after Labor Day?
People may not be able to gather if if things continue. Um but but no, I understand. We look at, we think about Memorial Day and July fourth and the consequences of people gathering. But uh I think considering just where we are in in our county and our in our city, where we are with the number of employees uh who have tested positive, uh we have to, as a community, because we're all in this together and in order to make it work, we have to all be in this together, we have to decide what is the best option for seeking ISD.
Well, I really appreciate, and Ms. Moreno, uh Mrs. Moreno alluded to this, in thinking of our staff and our teachers who, you know, may have some health concerns, and maybe those will be able to teach virtually. And in figuring out how all of that is going to happen, who teaches virtually, who is at home, I'm really anxious to see how that's all going to play out. And do we start school virtually? Do some go to school, some do not? I know that's the question that's on a lot of people's minds. That's the questions I'm getting from the community.
Yes, and and we do have, we do have employees with pre-existing medical conditions. Or we have employees who have children with um autoimmune disorders. And and so those are things that we're going to look at individually um with the goal of of all teachers back in a building, teaching either face-to-face or virtually in a building, but also considering those circumstances which we just discussed, where those teachers need to be our virtual teachers, teaching from home in a place where we can ensure their their safety and well-being.
And I feel for them, too, because I know some of our teachers have children of their own that need to be taught as well. So I know that you guys think about them, too. So thank you so much for all of this hard work. And please thank the task force on our behalf as well. So I'll let other people ask some questions now.
So Dr. Gutierrez, if we did start after Labor Day, would that kick finals back beyond the Christmas holidays?
It absolutely would. Um it 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 would put us back temporarily for a year um with the semester, the fall semester ending in January. Um but we would return back to what has been well-received and and wanted in this community for a while to end the semester in December.
Okay. Are there any other questions from trustees about public health concerns?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, Mike, and so who's talking, me or?
No, go ahead. This isn't bad, but go ahead.
Okay, um I also want to thank the uh the uh task force for all that they have done. It's a well-thought-out plan, and I know that lots of work went into it. So I'm assuming that we're still on the public health issue um or discussion. I have a question for Kirsten on um the thermometers, looking at the ones that can scan like thirty um temperatures that in a minute or whatever. What do you do with the child or the person that does have the hundred-degree temperature? How do you keep that, the privacy uh on that when you're having to pull them out and, you know, isolate them and things like that?
That uh is, of course, a concern. And looking at all of the vendors, there are actually some of these machines which sound out alarms or a big red light goes off and alerting everybody that that kid um has a fever above a hundred, which I think would be incredibly traumatizing when we're trying to keep people's anxiety down. Um that is all we need. So those are not the ones we're looking at. Um what we're looking at are ones that us, uh certain staff members um would have access to the software and it um would identify the student's face. And so then they would go and get that student um as quickly, you know, as they could get them. Uh and then they would just take them over, you know, so it would just be like an uh an adult coming over and taking a student off to the side so that it's not alarming to other people um and other students. And of course, they don't run up and saying, you know, you've got a fever. So anyway, it would be discreet. Uh and then bring them over and and telling them why and having them get secondarily screened. Because, of course, you know, it, there could be an error as well. But if they then are uh over the hundred degrees, then the parent would be called and they would be put into the nurse's office. In an area, we're looking at also making sure that we have the screens up in all of the nurse areas. They are in the high school, but making sure they are in the elementary schools as well. Two, one, that's a protection, you know, to have a um the the screen around the student so that people um aren't all looking at that student. But um it also helps keep, you know, the germs in that area. And then that would be disinfected once that student leaves.
You also alluded to um dividers in the classroom. Um are you talking about dividers like in tables or dividing the rooms?
Oh, well, um what I'm thinking, both may have, may have merit. Um what I was speaking to are, uh first of all, there's a Plexiglas um dividers. And there was a lot of discussion in the, in uh the subcommittee about you've got the cardboard dividers, you've got Plexiglas dividers. And everybody really understands that, you know, the need to see um students. And so cardboard dividers aren't ideal. And then also uh really talking about would we put these dividers on every student's desk? Well, first, there's, you know, the cost-benefit analysis of that, um as well as uh the fact that after COVID is over, we don't want um a Plexiglas um graveyard uh at some campus somewhere when these things are not in use. Um if, in fact, their value is is not necessarily um very high. So when we really looked through that, we considered the areas where those would uh be more needed, where the um value would be higher. And that is in areas where um like for reading groups, so at a reading table. Um we want students to still interact and learn together because that is a component of learning. Um isolated learning is not ideal. So we've been in a classroom setting. Um if students have to be within six feet of one another, um the Plexiglas um dividers would help maintain safety. And so we would look at like those kind of areas. Or when we're looking at our very young students, if it's necessary to have more um just to ensure safety, uh we would be looking at investing in that.
Okay. I I do have other questions, but they're the, and other sections, so I'll just wait until we get to those different sections. Thank you, Christian.
You're welcome.
I I think I, my question is for Kristen as well. Are we going to have enough of that equipment, that PPE equipment? Do we have a guess how much we're going to need?
So on Thursday, um the seven pallets are coming from the state, so we do start with a lot of that PPE equipment. Um however, that does not include everything. Um and we have seven hundred and sixty-six gallons of the hand sanitizer, but we are putting the hand sanitizer stations. So we've talked with maintenance um and Mr. Pizania and the team over there um to ensure that they have the gel. Um about six months of it um stocked and ready, because we know people are going to go through the hand sanitizer like water. Um and we want them to, because what we do, uh what we find from from researching public health is really, if we do nothing more than consistently hand sanitize, um we will protect our students and our staff and our classrooms and in our schools. So that's just necessary. So we know we need to have a lot of that on hand. Of course, we're concerned about shortages, um like everybody saw in the spring. Um and uh and we know that right now, it's very hard to get your hands on wipes, um sanitizing and disinfecting wipes. So we've got orders in for um those things that haven't come in yet. But these other PPE items like masks and whatnot, yes, you can, they're readily available now.
I, I have one that I know is for Kirsten and some that may be for someone else. Water fountains and things like that, what does that look like in the bottle filling stations like they have at the elementary schools? What are those? How does that work?
So I'm I'm glad uh that everybody is working on the bo- bottle filling stations because that will be what will be encouraged is for students to have their own individual water bottles. Because, no, clearly, um with germs and contamination, it is not a good idea to have kids' mouths on the uh water fountains throughout the school. So uh we will be very much encouraging and assisting with making sure kids have their water bottles, preferably with names on them.
And then we, you know, we, we heard about what, you know, the classrooms may look like. What do things like band and athletics and recess look like?
So speaking to the UIL um areas, um which obviously regulate our athletics and band, uh that is another source of guidance um and recommendations that we would be following. And then recess, uh really in working with um Pete Silvius and his team, uh the good news is uh that the science is aligned with the idea that, you know, students being outside, uh it's good for the soul as well as good for the health. So being outside is actually ideal. So recess time, um there would be no uh reduction in that. Now, we may look at um how many students are out there at one time, and so the schedule might look a little bit different. But we definitely want to keep recess um as part of what kids are doing because just the reality of um germ spreading is that it's less likely in that environment. Of course, we'd still be um disinfecting in uh that area as well, but letting kids play is important. Um Kirsten, I, you know, there may be a child, like my daughter was a chronic strep carrier. She had temperature frequently in kindergarten and first grade. So if you have a child who has a temperature and it turns out that they have
Strepped, I I guess right now if they had strep or something else, they would just need a doctor's note to come back. I guess what I'm really wondering is if the, I've been hearing a lot about saliva tests. If those types of tests actually come fruition is, what do you think the odds are of schools being able to get their hands on those? So that we can get an immediate result on whether or not they have some type of infection with the virus.
Well, if you look at the policies, you know, right now with nurses, if a student has a fever over a hundred degrees, the parent would be called and they.
Right.
Would have to not have that. Now, there are unique circumstances like that of your daughter where with the doctor's note. Explaining a peculiar circumstance, you know, that would be a case by case uh, decision, but we will. You know, obviously we don't catch every child who who necessarily comes to school with a fever and then we also know that some students take. Like Tylenol or or medication before and so their fever doesn't pop up till about eleven or or noon. Um, but uh, if those tests become readily available and that's been, of course, a big issue is just accessibility of testing. But if there is one that is not like the nasal um, swab that uh, is the current uh, protocol. But it's something that is really quite easy that could be uh, processed by the school nurses. That would be absolutely be something that we'd look into, working with the health department as well as our local emergency management officials. On how we could make that happen.
All right. Do we have any more questions uh, for Kirsten? If not, that's our, our next um, topic was personnel. Does anybody have a question for Cindy Moreno?
One thing I do want to say is that a lot of this is going to be learning as we go. We, we can think about all of these scenarios that can happen, but it's just like it's been this summer specifically with personnel. It's a matter of experiencing it and establishing, making sure that the protocols are working, fine tuning the protocols. To ensure that we handle the next personnel matter more effectively, um, timely, whatever the case is. But a lot of it is going to be learning as we go because there is no roadmap that we have to reference. There is no other school district in the country that has dealt with anything similar. So we're all in this together, learning and growing and sharing information and been very thankful for other districts that have shared their work and we've shared our work. But it is going to be a lot of just going through the day to day and and we're going to create a comprehensive. Guide that we'll share. But even that is going to have to be fine tuned uh, daily because it's all new. But one thing that we can probably be sure of is that if we deal with another pandemic in the future, we'll know what to do. And hopefully this, this is the last one, but I just felt like I needed to share that a lot of it is going to be. Learning by trial and and error.
It definitely makes sense. All right. Um, for Mrs. Moreno, Cynthia Moreno, any questions? I had a couple and and I don't really know if we can answer these at this point, but let's say that a teacher comes down sick, Ms. Moreno. Does that mean that all of her students will have to go into quarantine as well?
Um, at this point in time, that's what we're thinking is gonna happen, just to make sure that. One, she is in fact, or he is in fact COVID positive. Then we have to look at. The assignment, was she in close proximity with students and then go from there.
So kind of.
And this is where Bill uh, talked about every teacher being a blended learning teacher. And and the great thing is we all had an opportunity to practice in the spring. So that this teacher who has tested positive and had close interactions with their students. Has to overnight those students go into a virtual learning environment and and likely the teacher is ill and needing to get a sub to step in. But the teacher has all of the systems ready to go um, for that first day of virtual instruction.
And what if um, the students in her class, if if they were to test positive as well? Maybe they ride a bus, they ride multiple buses. What about all the children on that?
Contact tracing, contact tracing is what we're all gonna have to be experts in.
Very complicated, yeah. So I'm, I don't know if we can, well, maybe we can. I believe there's federal funding out there to cover employees if they get sick. So if a teacher is COVID positive and maybe they end up being hospitalized and they're out for a month. Uh, how's that gonna affect their sick leave? Is it gonna be covered?
Um, right now there is EPSL that's been granted through the um, the COVID Care Act. So they have fourteen days or eighty hours of um, covered time. If it goes beyond that, then they do have to start going into their own personal leave.
Okay. All right.
I have one question.
Kirsten, yes.
Go ahead. Um, so if you're a teacher at the high school and you're the only teacher that teaches your subjects, I'm thinking of electives like. Newspaper or technical theater or welding or cosmetology or something like that. Would you spend part of your day with the in-person students and part of your day doing the. Uh, online?
Well, in some of the courses, it will be a requirement that. You have to come in for a course like welding, um, that you can't do virtually or cosmetology. In those cases, the students uh, will will have to come in in order to earn the credit and and attain the the certification. Now there are other electives where there could be additional flexibility and you could see where a large percentage of, let's just. I'm just gonna say choir, um, and I believe the choir teachers is on uh, would have to possibly. Teach face to face um, and live stream uh, the, the content with students that are at home. Or have a period where they are teaching virtually and that of course it's going to be challenging. There is going to be some more gray areas with some courses and some flexibility where there are other courses where. The student has to be on campus in order to earn the credit and to attain the certification.
If you were one of those, say a cosmetology student and you needed to come in for cosmetology, would you need to come in person for everything? Or could you just come for cosmetology and then do everything else remotely?
Well, and and that's another, that's something that we still need to discuss. Because do we want to create an environment where there is a lot of traffic coming in and out of a school building? And you've got to remember that there are all these protocols that have to take place when a student is entering. And so we're already putting on additional responsibilities on the staff. And so that's something that we still need to talk through. For example, extracurricular, the question has come. Can a student still be in football, but yet they're opting to stay at home? The answer to that is yes. Because they can participate before or after school, same with volleyball. But we have to make sure that we limit traffic coming in and out of a building and minimizing exposure. As much as possible. Now, could there be exceptions in extenuating circumstances? Absolutely, where we take things. Into individual consideration, but uh, one of the things we want to make sure to do is make sure that the workload. For everyone on campus is is reasonable because one thing we can't do is hire additional staff. But that is a, that is a great question and something we still need to establish protocols on.
And just to jump in on that, transportation also comes, becomes an issue for those students who. May wish to want to learn from home remotely and participate in extracurricular activities.
If I may add, we're working um, with Stephen Gonzalez, our CTE director. He has a meeting tomorrow with the service center to talk about the courses that were approved by T E A for remote learning. Versus the ones that require face to face, as Dr. Gutierrez said. So he, uh, he'll be attending that meeting tomorrow and we're meeting with the high school on Thursday to solidify some of those plans. I'm also meeting with my team. To talk with some of these things um, on tomorrow and then Thursday as well. So we'll have. We'll have outlines of courses that require again face to face, um, based on T E A's guidance and then we can be allowed to be offered remotely.
All right. Do we have any additional questions? I think we're still on personnel with, for Ms. Moreno, trustees. All right, we'll move on to our school operations with, which are meals. I just want to say thank you to Jacob. It sounds really complicated to try to send food out to remote locations for kids that may be doing distance learning. And just kind of a logistical nightmare. So anybody else have any questions or comments? We do want to thank you for all the time that you put into everything that you did this summer, of course, and now looking forward to the fall. All right. Yes, can, Ms. Moreno?
Uh, I have a couple of questions for Jacob. Um, and yeah, it is gonna be a challenge to get all those meals taken care of. Just out of curiosity, uh, this, the timing in between lunch periods. So that you can get the cafeteria ready to go for the next group coming in. You have any idea as to how many minutes that would be? Between one period, lunch period to the next?
We're thinking somewhere between five to ten minutes and and maybe even. James might be able to speak on that even better, but if it just, it really depends on how many spaces we're actually using. So as I said, for the high school, you know, we're looking at the cafeteria, the library and maybe even some outdoor areas. So that might be of an area where we need to consider exactly how long that takes. It might be ten or fifteen minutes if it's very spread out, but um, if we have the right equipment, I know uh, uh. Mr. Pizania has talked about getting some equipment that might speed up that process, but um. Anywhere between five, ten minutes, we think we can accomplish that at this time.
Because that also impacts the the daily schedule for those different schools. And my other question is, would you be providing weekend meals during the school year? Like you have during the summer?
So at this time, it it gets into the, the specifics of what each program's goal is to accomplish. And right now we are operating through the summer food service program and they have allowed us that ability to serve weekend meals. However, through the traditional national school lunch program that we operate during the normal school year. They have very, they have specifically said that they are not allowing weekend meals at this time. That could change. Uh, we have been allowed some, some waivers that would allow us to serve meals. Curbside without parents present and be able to serve multiple meals for a day that instructional. Learning is happening, but at this time, if Saturday is not included on the normal instructional calendar, then weekend meals are not allowed.
Now, one thing that that I want to make sure to point out, when go back, going back to Mrs. Moreno's um, first question. Is that a lot of the scheduling is going to be done on a campus by campus basis. To ensure that we're maximizing instructional time, but also ensuring uh, safety. So. It'll, it'll be child nutrition working very closely with administration on the scheduling and they've already started by establishing. What what he has presented was in conjunction with campus administrators. But another thing to 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 keep in mind for next year is that things are moving along when it comes to the. Community eligibility provision. The only thing that is lacking on the district's end is taking it to the board for approval. So it it looks uh, as if uh, we will be providing meals to all students in pre-K through eighth grade in the next school year.
Good. Good.
Thank you, Jacob, to your group, your nutrition group for all that they have done this summer to keep our babies fed.
You're all very welcome and and please I thank James and transportation and custodians.
Yes.
Working so cooperatively during this time. Uh, it it's definitely been an entire district wide effort to make sure that meal service is not stopped. And and I'm happy that we've been able to provide a hundred and fifteen days worth of meals during this closure. So it's, it's been a group effort and very happy and proud to be a part of SAGI.
It's evident that the team is working together, very evident.
It's quite remarkable really when you stop to think about it and it truly does take a village. And for so many of these families, this, you know, is the, the only nutritious food they're gonna get. So thank you for everything you've done. Any other questions from trustees?
Well, just keep in mind, we still wanted to try and do something when all this mess is over with. To show our appreciation. Remember, we talked about that at a, a meeting with them, so. To show our appreciation.
Thank you for that reminder, Ms. Duncan.
You're welcome.
All right. So I guess moving on to academics, does anybody have any questions?
I do. What, what, I mean, I guess this is for Mark. Uh, what's the plan? After Dr. Gutierrez just told us about each school is gonna be working on their own time schedule individually. What, is there still gonna be time carved out for PLCs and um. Things that we have put in our strategic plan uh, to help move us along uh, academically? Is that gonna?
Yes, ma'am.
Be able to continue?
Yes, we, we anticipate that PLCs will continue it as a priority of the district. And we believe that professional development, ongoing professional development through the PLC and the planning and. Just being able to get that face time, whether it's virtual or face to face with teachers is extremely important. We want to make sure our teachers are continuing to grow so that they can better serve our kids. So we're gonna be working with the individual um, campuses. To make sure that PLCs on their cap, at at the campus is happening at a minimum. If the schedule allows, we will have district wide PLCs so that uh, by grade bands, elementary. Um, and secondary can also meet um, either remotely or face to face.
And that would include the rigor and relevance part also, right?
Correct. Yep. So part of the PLC is um, we're talking about, you know, what is our curriculum, what is it that we want students to learn? And then the other one is how do they learn it? And that's when we include the written relevant framework.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you so much.
Well, I want to say I'm happy that we're steering away from Pearson and going to our own efforts uh, here at our district. We've got a very, a lot of very talented teachers and I'm happy to hear that they're gonna be working, they know our students. I assume they're gonna be getting some type of a stipend for that?
Yes, ma'am. So um, we're, we're rolling this out. I just shared it with principals today, so most people still don't know. But we are rolling it out um, beginning next week. We're planning about five weeks. We want to roll out the, the ideas that we have between twelve and eighteen, uh, so pretty much the first semester written um, in the next five weeks.
Well, they're gonna hit the ground running, that's for sure.
Correct. Um, and what we're trying to to do is, is really. Words that I, that a lesson um, can be differentiated for face to face and remote learning. And so it's not about writing one lesson for face to face and a completely totally different lesson for. And a completely totally different lesson for intervention. Differentiate um, based off of that core lesson. So we're gonna be working with the directors and the coordinators, our principals, our academic deans and our instructional coaches to get this done. And of course, we're inviting teachers and there will be a stipend. Um, we're anticipating twenty-five dollars an hour for up to about forty hours. For the teachers that are writing curriculum.
So when folks hear that we're going to virtual learning, it's not gonna be like what they experienced at the end of the last school year. It's gonna be much more rigorous and expect, a lot more expected of our students.
Correct. Um, what we had to do at the end of last year was put something together literally in a matter of days, right? What we did, what we're really proud of, um, and I really want to commend the teachers for doing. Is throughout the week, they were meeting in a weekly PLC district wide. Part of what limited us in the level of rigor was the access, right? We didn't want to create one online lesson that was full rigor. That we expect in every single lesson and then students don't have access to that, so they get a packet. A packet, when you put a paper in front of a student, it really limits the rigor, not saying that there isn't ways to make it rigorous. Or make it relevant or make it more engaging, but it's a lot more difficult. So that is really what uh, holds us back. But because of the funding that has been committed to access. But because of the funding that has been committed to access, whether it's through the device or through a Wi-Fi hotspot, we believe that we can increase the level of rigor this go-around so that our students, whether it's face-to-face or online, have the same level of access to curriculum and a, and a well-developed lesson.
I think it's a really great idea to go to CSOW for the elementary teachers. I think that it will be a lot more friendly to both them and, and the students. So appreciate that. Any other questions?
I have, I have one. What does dyslexia services, speech therapy services, testing, and gifted and talented services look like?
So anything around special education services, the federal government has not wavered, and so they want us to provide those services regardless. So if it is a student who is remote, we will have to think about how we can provide that service remotely. TEA has contracted with a couple of platforms to help provide speech therapy services the way we're doing it now. So while again, it's not the same level of therapy, they at least have some sort of therapy services that they're receiving. For testing, while we know that it can be done remotely, we, we may ask for special education testing that they bring the student face-to-face if possible. If not, we will also try to do it remotely. So those services will not stop. We just have to get really creative around schedules, right? Around the personnel, and I wonder what that looks like. Where even if possible, you know, we did some home visits over the summer, and if home visits are, are safe, then that may also be sometimes appropriate.
If we have to go to a considerable amount of time for remote learning, can you let us know what that would look like for our students? Would it be a, a specific time of the day that they would have to tune in for remote learning, or how would that look? I know some students, maybe family members work, can't work with their students till the end of the day. What would that look like?
So there's, there's two major ways that this is going to happen. We believe that the best is a blended model, so there will be some synchronous learning that happens face-to-face, and then there will be some asynchronous learning that happens one-on-one. So ideally, we would want to get a teacher in front of a student every single day from a certain time. I was going to say, you know, from nine to 10, for an example. We know that that's not always possible, though, and so we're going to have to be flexible. Our teachers did a great job of that. Those students who couldn't log in face-to-face were able to do it at different times by setting up meetings or reaching out to their teachers and maybe a phone call instead of the face, instead of the Zoom meeting or the Google Hangout. So we know that it's going to have to be a combination of both. So every lesson that is written, and that's what we will plan in the next five weeks, is going to be some sort of asynchronous learning and then some sort of just individual learning that then the teacher can follow up with the student.
In addition, there's going to be additional resources that are going to be provided to parents or guardians and guardians so that they can support the remote learning. A, a site, a Google site that, that gives information on how to monitor Google Classroom. So the level of, the number of resources that are going to be available this fall compared to the spring is going to be very different because we've had an opportunity to, to live through it, and we've had an opportunity to, to build. And, and so when it comes to parents, and I know there's a lot of anxiety with that and a lot of questions, well, how do I log into this? How do I check grades? How, how do I look at Google Classroom? There's going to be resources provided to parents as well so that they can better support their students.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other additional questions for Mr. Cantu, from any of the trustees? Okay, well, we'll go, I think I skipped transportation, so Nikki, you're not getting off the hook here. But hello. I, I know that the, the C, that they, they're recommending that parents drive their kids to school, or the kids walk or ride their bikes and so on. Are we still planning on, on the buses themselves? Because some of these kids are so far out and their parents may not have the means to drive them in. Are they going to be spaced out like every other seat? Is that the plan? And would that, could that possibly mean more than one bus running the same route?
Well, at this particular time, we are looking at the full capacity. As far as whatever they may look like, it's also going to depend on who decides to ride the bus and who doesn't decide to ride the bus. You know, the students will be in masks as well as the bus drivers and, you know, with the hand sanitizing and doing all that to get on the bus as well.
All right, I like the sound of that. And then what about with athletics, perhaps football players on a bus or band members on a bus? Will those types of guidelines come from UIL? Or will that be a district decision?
They will likely come from UIL, I, I would hope. But one of the things that, that the guidance we're getting from the state when it comes to, the CDC guidelines are very strict, but a lot of the restrictions, specifically when it comes to transportation, are pretty much being lifted. And so that, that does cause concern, but when we're looking at about, at least right now, the estimate based on the survey, 50% of our students learning at home, then that's 50% of, an estimated 50% of, of buses filled. So that's going to work out nicely. Now, when it comes to athletics, you're not going to have 25% of the team. Then we, one, we'll see what guidance comes, but if not, then, then we may look at additional buses in order to social distance. There, there are things that, that we may need to work out. But what I do have to say right now about athletics is they are doing a fine job of, with their protocols in ensuring spacing and mask and sanitizing, hand washing stations, and it's, it's working nicely. It's my hope that we can continue with our strength in conditioning.
Dr. Guedes, would we still go proceed as usual with the middle school athletics, knowing that it's crunch time on Thursdays when you have middle schools playing and the JV and freshman team playing? Is there a plan to, to keep going with that, or do we back off?
Right now, there is, and with the guidance that's coming from UIL, they're looking at everything starting August 3rd. Now, things could change because those decisions were made a couple of weeks ago, and, and we're already seeing districts that have made decisions to postpone the, the season or to cancel. So a lot of it is going to have to do on, one, with the guidance and the trends that we're seeing locally. And one of the, the conversations that I had the opportunity to have, I'm in the Bear County Cluster Group, is really trying to make a decision when it comes to athletics and band as a group. So we're going to continue to have dialogue. We meet once a week as a, as a county, and then once a week as a region. So we, I'll be working closely with area superintendents. But as of, as of today, yes, we're, we're moving forward. But keeping in mind that things can change tomorrow.
Mr. Pizana, did you have something you wanted to add? I saw you pop up on my screen.
No, not, not really. I think they, hi. No, Ms. Biddings covered it pretty well, I believe, and so did Dr. Guedes. They're right on cue perfectly. So all good.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Biddings. Anybody else have questions about transportation? All right. Moving on to, I guess, hold the whole child? Anybody have any questions for Pete? My computer knocked out on me while he was talking, so I don't have any questions, so.
To all the, a big thank you to all the committee members and subcommittees and the other individuals who are involved in developing this, so well thought out, well planned. And I think it's going to be a big learning curve the first two weeks. And I know our district has the right staff in place in this committee and throughout the school district to make whatever changes are necessary to make the kids, you know, come to school in a safe environment. That's all.
I agree, thank you. Quick question.
I have, I have a question.
A famous Moreno.
The distant learning. I, I guess I'd, I'd like a definition or what is the difference or how are they going to work in unison, the digital learning director and the innovative instruction director?
It's like, that's a question.
You want to speak to that?
So it, I think you, you, you mentioned it when you said it. It's, it's about working in unison, right? The, the part of the reason why we felt the need to have a director for innovative instruction is that we know that with or without the pandemic, learning online and learning in a blended setting is something that is just good practice, right? We, we keep talking about 21st century learning and 21st century skills, and we're in it, right? And so in order for us to focus and really build a robust program, not just in response to the pandemic, but just because we believe that that's what's best for all kids, that is, that is why we added this position. I, I see a lot of collaboration with the director of digital learning. When Randy was there, he was part of our group, the LLS department, and he joined us at our regular meeting, so there was cross-collaboration already. So I foresee a lot of cross-collaboration between the departments. It's just going to help strengthen the, the technology end of it, and then, of course, the teaching and learning part of it. Mr. Lewis, if you want to add something else to that?
I think that's good. The digital learning director also works with the, the tech apps side of the instruction, kind of like the learning specialist for technology apps, and that's a big, important piece of our K8 instructions and working with those teachers. The professional development side supporting the teachers also does a lot with robotics and other, other things that, that innovative learning, once we put this, I mean, if we have 3,500 kids going 100% online, that's, that's basically another school district in Texas that's in the top, I mean, it's a huge, huge group of folks that needs a contact person. That's a point of contact when you're trying to coordinate all the campuses. Plus, when we're, just the attendance taking part of this is just, is, is mind-boggling amount of adjustments we're going to have to make in our attendance-taking policies that, that will have to come to the board before school starts is, is, and some changes that are going to be made are, is just, it's, it's huge. And so talking with other PMS folks, data folks, MIS directors in, in the state, the, the guidance or the, the frameworks there, but the guidance hasn't come yet. So we're still, still working on that and coordinating, you know, how you, you take attendance, you know, like a kid could be in attendance in a 24-hour period, but yet you still have to have a one period of the day that is the official attendance-taking period. But so there, there's these things that, that the state has not changed in attendance that we're going to have to adjust and coordinate and making sure teachers are, are taking their attendance right, because our funding is still 100% tied to our average daily attendance. The state has not changed that. Now, they have built in some, some, I wouldn't say failsafes, but some flexibility in the first six to 12 weeks of school and some other pieces that, so we don't get huge hits. But accurate accounting and is going to, is going to be, it's going to be huge coming up and coordinating that, coordinating campuses, following up with teachers. You know, if a kid, well, that kid checked in at 11:58 PM, so we get to count him here that day. Well, how do you do that after everybody's asleep or this, or do you go back? There's just so much to coordinate. So that coordinating that, that online instructional school, basically a school that encompasses all schools is, is going to be a huge undertaking.
And I think the, another point I'd like to point out is that it's not something, this, the responsibilities of this director of innovation is not something we can add on to someone else's plate because we've still got the normal day-to-day operations that, that have to happen. And, and, and so there, 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 because of this, everything that's happening with COVID, there's a, a new layer of work. But it's our hope that, you know, there, there's always a silver lining that there's, there, there's going to be a new approach to teaching and learning in Seguin ISD after COVID. And, and that's the exciting part of all of this, is that we will get to continue with a blended model and utilizing Google Classroom in every classroom and CSOW in every classroom at elementary. So this is really going to transform the way we educate kids in Seguin. But it, as, right now, it's a lot of work on everyone's part, and it's going to be a lot of work on, for our teachers again this fall. But it's going to be important to have, have that expertise and leadership, really leading the blended model efforts in Seguin ISD.
God bless every single teacher that we have. We appreciate them so much.
Yes, we do. Every staff member.
Everybody. All right, any further questions on distance learning or Bill? I wasn't really clear, Bill. So I, I think what I heard was at the beginning of the year that the Google Chromebooks will be given out to the high school teacher, students almost immediately. And with the elementary, will it be the same, or will there be a little bit of a lag time?
So, I mean, we're working hard to try to, to fill those classrooms with, with the 22 devices at the K, K5. We still have about 1,300 devices that are checked out to students from the spring that we allowed them to keep because there was summer learning opportunities. We didn't know what summer school was going to look like, those kind of things. So we have those dates coming up. We have about a two-week window starting July 17th for folks to turn in devices. And hopefully, and even maybe some of those folks, they may could use those devices once we, once we turn on online registration in the next couple of weeks and send out that information. So we got to collect those. It's a lot of devices. Collect those back, prep them, and then redistribute them back to where they're going to go. A lot of them are changing locations, grade levels, it's not just grabbing and putting it back in a cart. So we, we have that whole coordination piece. We got to, you know, we got to assess damage fix, you know, how much damage fix we need to do. So far, it hasn't been really bad at all. But we, we just, we need to get that settled. But our, our goal is to have the high school devices ready to check out before school starts. And that was, that was kind of in jeopardy because the, this, I mean, Dell made an announcement like on Monday of last week that they were on a 30-day delivery for, for devices. And then by Thursday, it went to a 90-day delivery message, which was just going to throw it all up. So we had to do a little switch around, and we picked, we worked with our providers and got a different model from a different vendor. So, so we should be getting those delivered in the next two to two and a half weeks so we can get them ready for our high school kids. So we, we're thankful for that and the vendors for working with us on that. So you can just, you just know that, that in the state, talk today, the commissioner talked today about helping districts procure certain items because things are getting so hard, they've been hard, and it's not getting easier to get your hands on things that every single person in the, in every single district in the state needs and the country needs all at once. And so those, those supply lines and procurement processes are very difficult right now, so.
Well, when I hear about all the work y'all need to do, I just feel like I need to get my car and drive over there, and y'all give me an assignment, so.
I got one for you, come on over.
Okay.
I think that goes for all the rest of us also.
I think so.
You all must be working 24/7.
Yeah, even during our online registration, we have, we're, we're going to be staffing phone help over the weekends, on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays as well for folks that were, that's their time that we know, since it's our first time through, that there'll be some phone help available. since it's our first time through that there'll be some phone help available for folks that that need need help with online registration. So we're we're going to have a seven-day-a-week helpline for a couple of weeks, so.
Well, if there are no further questions from anyone, I think I propose that we go to a short break. It is now eight forty-three. We can come back at eight fifty, give everybody a short break, and then we'll meet in closed session. All right. All right, so we are now back in close section, I mean, open session. It is nine fourteen. And up first in our open session is consideration of possible action, including adoption of a resolution approving the sale of real property and improvements located at two twenty-five North Saunders, Seguin, Texas, seven eight one five five, commonly known as a Lizzie M Burgess property and delegate authority to the superintendent to negotiate and execute a sales agreement and special warranty deed affecting the sale of such property. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the sale of the Lizzie M Burgess property.
All right.
I second the motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Moreno and a second from Ms. Duncan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I can't see anybody, so I'm just going to do a roll call vote from right to left. Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Crittenden?
Hi.
Ms. Jimenez is, yes. Mr. Amador?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Moreno?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
All right, so we have a seven to oh vote and the motion carries. Moving on, we also have an action item to approve the resolution to transfer technology equipment to students. Mr. Lewis, what would you like to share with us?
Well, this, President Jimenez and board members, Dr. Gutierrez, this is kind of a little-known item that is in legal policy, C Q C, that allows districts to transfer technology items to to students. I mean, we can already pass out items and and provide technology to students with the with the intention of returning returning to us. But we can, according to policy, we can declare the items end of life, which most of these items are ten years old, that we had in the past maybe added some memory, some things. We can only take them up to a certain operating system. But, you know, Google still works, and so it still is about as valuable as a Chromebook for the most part, and it could be something that could help us stopgap as we get through this year with a lot of unknowns for students and it could provide some technology to homes. Now, these have to go to homes of students that are considered in need of such a device and do not have a device. We, the resolution is providing us the ability to, we have to create some guidelines. We have to, we have to eliminate any items on the computer that may be considered confidential. We were totally wiping them clean, starting them from scratch, so there'll be nothing on those computers. And then we'll put a process in place and 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 declare these these items end of life. These are items that we're going to go to a recycler anyway because they don't really hold any resale value. There are recyclers that pay for items, but nobody wants these items because they're past. They want things that are like maybe five years out. If you're on a four- or five-year replacement cycle, people will buy stuff back from you. They don't usually buy a two thousand and nine computer from you. But they still have some life in them, and as we're trying to get through these difficult times, I think this would be a great, great way to get another year or so out of these products that could benefit our our students and help help with those. I mean, we don't have a device in place at this time. So this resolution will just allow us to move forward with that process, put the steps in place and and move forward. I've reviewed all this with with our attorney and and gotten the thumbs up on on everything. Usually, we don't do this. I get the question. I got the question. Why have we done this before? Well, we really, we use things until they are used up, most of the time, technology-wise in the district. And we really have not ever been this ramped up with with technology items. And we we are, we've increased our footprint and and numbers and technology, one-to-one, and other things we've done over the past four or five years. So, I mean, we are at an all-time high as far as number of of devices. And so these are devices that that really don't have a place in the classrooms or labs anymore because they, you can't put state testing, you can't test on them. It was for state testing. There's some things you can't do, but you can do things at home and the requirements that are going to, for students for for online learning in the fall.
Bill, are these laptops, tablets?
These are all iMac, iMac computers, the the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one inch iMacs you see in most of our labs, larger screens, wall-in-one Mac computers.
Okay.
They have a black back on them and they're silver on the front.
Well, Bill, so they're going to own them, right?
Yeah, we will. We will turn them over to them. We will make sure everything's working. And we will have, we will sign it over to them. We'll have record of of where it goes. Usually, you're supposed to, you 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 hand them out and then they keep them and they have to give them back if they leave the district or something before their end of life. But we're declaring all these end of life from the get-go because they were all scheduled for recycling going into the year. They were not going to be placed back in classrooms or or anywhere for this year. So they don't, they really have very little value. The value for us, if we had to read, if we had to image all these things and get them ready for an auction, we'd we'd lose money on the deal. The the game here is, there is a, one of the, one of the requirements is there has to be a benefit to the district and to to the students or benefit to the district. And we believe spending the time to wipe these and give them to students benefits the district and the instructional programs of the district, so.
Yeah, I I agree. It's a good idea. The, for example, if a student uses it and they won't be, have access to a Chromebook, will there also be technical support from the district, even though it doesn't belong to the district?
So we have to offer some minor level of of support. So, I mean, we'll kind of monitor that kid. If they have a problem, they call it in. I'll still have maybe a small, keep a small group. I can swap, I can give them another one or something if if we need to. But we're not, we can't put them into repair. I mean, that's the reason we're getting rid of them. You you can't really, you can't really repair them anymore. The price for parts is just, you know, you can't find the parts anymore.
That's why I was just concerned if they start using it for online, you know, training and then all of a sudden two turns into it and breaks, and if it's something you guys can repair, then they'll just get a Chromebook or something equivalent.
Yeah, we're just kind of maybe hoping this takes a little bit of the pressure off how many Chromebooks we got to hand out. Like, and this really impacts middle school kids, I think, the most because we have the high school covered and then we're going to have that mostly one-to-one in in elementary, I think. So we will have those devices ready. So I'm really going to, I think I'm going to try to target middle school and maybe some pre-K families that may need something and try to try to target those those families in need. Because we probably have about three hundred and twenty or so devices checked out in the middle school level right now that we did this summer, about three twenty, three forty, somewhere around there. So if I could target those middle school folks, we've almost got that number covered. So we can minimize, and it would create less, be less chaos if we have to break or stop or close. Everything closes down, state closes down, technology would be in the hands of a lot of those kids already. And these computers can be go on a wireless network, so if we have to check out a hotspot to them or something, they'll they'll have that and they can put that computer, they can put these computers on the on the on the wireless Wi-Fi, et cetera, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a question on registration about whether they have any type of technology or or accessibility at their home?
Yeah, so we've asked, we've asked a couple of questions about, trying to ask it the right way. And it's, in coincidence, the state put out some suggestions today on questions to ask during registration. And when we already had those in there, but it tries to get us a good indication of, do you, what kind of, what kind of internet access do you have? Wi-Fi access, I don't have any. And we're trying to, trying to ask them in a way that we can get a good idea of of what type. So it's not just, yes, I have it or no, I don't have it. But asking, so it tells you, do you have a, you know, a cellular connection? Do you have sort of type of broadband connection like spectrum and kind of name some things out? Do you have a satellite? Do you have the country, country Wi-Fi, some things that are specific to our to our area? And then ask them, you know, what do they have? So we'll we'll know in registration exactly what 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 their access is or isn't. And that'll help. But I will probably give a lot of these out before that, before that's completed because the registration will open, but it's going to be a big window. I mean, not everybody's going to knock it out in a week, so it'll take, it'll take. There will probably be people registering after school starts too, so.
Yes.
Kind of how it usually works out.
Yes.
Even people that are returning still may not finish until after school's out. That's that just tends to be what happens, especially when you make these transition online, online registration. That kind of is, people are really used to what we used to do and it'll, it'll take a little while. We'll get everybody converted. It's going to be good.
All right. Any further questions from anybody? If not, do I hear a motion for approval?
I move to approve the motion.
Resolution.
You move to approve the resolution to transfer technology equipment to students. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Well, Denise raised her hand, so I'm giving it to her. So I have a motion from Mr. Amador, a second from Ms. Crittenden. Any further questions? Right now, I can see you all. So all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, opposed, same sign. Ms. Duncan, I didn't see a vote from you. Okay. You raise the other hand. All right, so the motion carries seven oh. All right, thank you. And that is it for our agenda this evening. Dr. Gutierrez, is there anything else you'd like to share with us before we sign off?
Just want to remind people that there is a town hall tomorrow at five o'clock where we'll again share the reopening plan as well as provide an opportunity for the community to ask questions and provide feedback on a delayed start. And then for staff, we are holding a town hall at two o'clock for for staff.
Is that tomorrow as well?
It is tomorrow.
Okay, all right. All right, anybody else have anything?
Can you send us the links for those?
You said yes.
Got it.
All right. All right.
Do we have to go in and sign on the resolution?
Nancy told me that, I think, that Ben and I have to come in and sign. And for the rest of you, since we have a record of your vote, that she can just write in your names.
Thank you.
All right, good question. All right, so Ben, sometime tomorrow, make some plans to go visit Ms. Nancy.
Will do.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, we'll call this meeting to an end. It is nine twenty-seven. And I'm sure we'll be seeing each other very soon. Thank you. And thanks to all of you who are doing so much work. It's just phenomenal.
Mind-boggling, what has.
All right, bye, everybody.
Stay healthy. Have a good day.